I'm down for whatever. You pick for me. Yeah, I'll wear it right now.
Let's go. Let me get a kid back.
Question to the forum. Three.
It's much longer than that. The day before the rally, the first hour, they go to like 2006, 2005. One man, he calls me, "How long ago?" You know me? I think he should call us now. Come on, let's get him out. Good deal. That's what I'm gonna do now. You have to be good about it. Come on, come on. Tell my mom this baby daughter. He can start speaking. He's broken. Now, if you're going to give him anything to say. All you gotta know is when you see him, and you tell him you have him, you put money in his hand like a cop. You have to, you need people cheering you. Again, talking about coins. You want to cover him with what you want to cover him with? Right? He's a monster. He's a you, man. He'll bust a lot. That's my, like, what he's doing. Probably going together, scoring the money, he's got big on the door. He's been at the, out of kids. Talking about school. Yep.
Oh, man. Another topic, but it's just, I have a question. Yeah, so. James won't be here until 6:45. I have 200 to call.
Yeah, as long as it don't look like it.
Yeah, somebody has to stop. Try to get a time one. I like, I like them skeleton ones. You see everything? All that I don't like is you gotta, like, wind it every day. Yeah, it's an old school, it's an old school line, yeah. I like it.
Good evening. I'm gonna call the special meeting, which is a public forum regarding the budget to order. If those could please stand for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Next order of business is a public forum regarding the budget. And the public is welcome to come and speak for up to five minutes. And Ms. Daly, I don't know if there's a script to read similar to Audience to Visitor. It's the same other than the amount of minutes.
Good evening. This is Robin Daly from the superintendent's office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by dialing, or by clicking raise hand and dialing star nine on the Zoom app. When you're called on to speak, you'll be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the board at this time.
Okay, probably at the four-minute mark, I'll have Ms. Taylor, if people are still speaking, raise a red card that says, please try to wind up your remarks. And at the five-minute mark, she'll hold it up for someone, someone who is online, she'll interrupt at the five-minute mark indicating it's time to wrap up your, your comments. So anybody here from the public like to address the board regarding the budget? Please put your, print your name, sign in, and your address. Don't rush up, Eric.
Good evening. My name is Eric Weiner. Live on Palisado Avenue. I'd like to suggest a couple of alternative ways to think about in, um, single-year budgeting and longer-term budgeting. I've never done, been through, in the business world, a budget where you don't look at long-term goals. And setting those long-term goals frequently is the first step in any budgeting process. So if, if I was sitting in your shoes, I would say, where as a district do we want to be in five or 10 years from now? And reach some consensus among that. And then turn to Dr. Hill and say, please present us a plan that will get us there. I personally would set some stretch goals here. You've done an amazing job, I think, as a district in measuring performance and, um, showing return on investment. That's just really clear, particularly the report from last, the last board meeting. I would love to say a goal that's set that says something like, by the time Windsor turns 400 years old in 2033, we're clearly recognized as in the top 20 or 25% of all the school districts in the state of Connecticut and the top five in greater Hartford. Take a goal like that and then work backwards. What will it take to build on the progress that's been made to date to ensure we get there? Now, um, let's take special ed as an example. It's very difficult, given the costs and the large number of special ed students here in Windsor. Might, that could be a big hindrance to achieving those goals because of the sheer cost. But spell out what that absolute cost would be in that long-term plan. And then any budget for an individual year, show what the difference is. Show what you're not funding. So you can make an individual trade-off saying, are we not going to do this? The hardest thing in the budget processing, process is decide what not to do, as opposed to just throwing in things and saying, we want to do all this stuff. If, so that, I would love you to start considering something like that. And those long-term goals might include things like universal pre-K, or should, in my, my view, include things like universal pre-K, substantial renovation and replacement of the, um, elementary schools, staffing up on the special, special ed and one-on-one tutoring side to get those lower performers up to grade level. And explicitly call out every year the, the percentage of students that are performing way below grade level. And show by not funding adequately, that will continue. But don't be afraid to show what the gap will be. And to use the enthusiasm you can build from the successes that collectively you've all achieved in order to recognize some of these long-term goals are not just crazy, um, wild guesses. Because I got confidence we can do this as Windsor, and we should. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom who'd like to address the board regarding the budget? Ms. Daly, is there anyone online?
There are no participants online.
Without objection? We're looking at both sides here. We'll close the public forum. And we'll be, it's at 6:42, and we'll be back to start the regular meeting at, at seven o'clock. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we close. I move that we close the, the public forum.
Please, sir, a second.
What's that gonna?
Motion made by Ms. Taylor to close the public forum. Seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Extentions? We're closed at 6:43. Be back at seven. I have something, I have something. I have something to talk, you want to talk to Mr. Panos about? Or Robin, well, no, I can talk to him. Okay.
Um, I just wanted to let you know that the next kind of executive session, we're going to clear the room. We've got everyone to, yeah, on the monitor.
Okay. And Leonard will handle that because I have to, I'll be in the executive session, but I can't speak in the executive session.
That's cool. I know, man. So. That's awesome.
So, in the minutes as presented on our conference, that's the same home board.
Yeah.
The minutes that home board, as the actual motion.
Yep.
And all the motions.
That's cool.
I just wanted to, I just watched the meeting.
That's great. No, it was nice.
I just saw him going, I just, you know, I looked at it again, but clearly, clearly remembered that, isn't it?
No, that's great.
The session on, on my amendment was, you know, was ended by a calling of the questions. And you have that listed there. You have so many votes, but there's, there's no reference.
They have these guides and, uh.
But the ones that's on board were, Robin said.
Yeah, it's a sample. It's like, you put these in every classroom and it's like, and everyone panics and you don't know what to do. And you, and you can customize it all.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. I, I was just curious if we have anything like that. Because this is, you know, in the military, we do the same sort of thing, making the mind.
Train people.
It's gonna say who made the motion and who.
Absolutely.
All the motions.
Yeah, yes.
All the motions, all the sub-teams, all that stuff.
Yep, yep. No, you gotta drill it, and drill it, and drill it.
I think these are made early.
Yeah.
Next order of business is recognitions and acknowledgements. And Dr. Hill, I think there's one item here.
Thank you, President Fury. I would like to turn the mic over at this time to our PSES Director, Ms. Christopher.
Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to turn it over to Marjorie Reno and Sue Kittredge. And they're going to talk a little bit about our students in the CBTA program who are here today.
Good evening. We would like to invite our students Frank and Shakira to come on up. Frank and Shakira are members of our CBTA program here at LP Wilson. It's our community-based transition academy. And so you may see their familiar faces from their internships at different places. We have internships at Geysler's, at...
Scott Sports Supplies, Ace Hardware, Burlington Store over in Bloomfield. And we have several mobile cleaning crews that clean community locations. Several of the Windsor firehouses, as well as several local churches.
And this fall, thanks, or last winter, actually, thanks to a grant from the WEF, we were able to start an in-house internship. And so we've been slowly building a business for the students to run. And it's a laser engraving business. And so they have a gift for each of you as part of that. So Frank and Shakira, if you want to grab those from right up there. And they had their first big order this week. We did a small sale last spring. And then this last month, they had an order for 100 ornaments. And we included you guys in that. And they did an awesome job of getting them all done in time for ornament season. And we just wanted to share that with you, let you know a little bit about our program. Their business has gotten big enough now where we're able to incorporate our students here in the Spark program as well. And we also have a flyer that's going to get passed out to each of you. Because tomorrow, we have a pop-up ornament shop that our students between Spark and CBTA here in the building have been working to create some pieces to sell, practice their business skills and their math skills. And we wish you a happy holiday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hang on, the tree.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
They're talented.
We have a few more gifts. And again, I want to say thank you to the students for making these beautiful gifts. This is another example of us utilizing the funding that we received from the Board of Education and also from WEF, which is very vital to what we do here in the Windsor Public Schools. And the students doing something, you know, I'm biased to people creating businesses. It's a, as a former business teacher, I actually like that, right? We can make money in schools, nothing wrong with that. But I also want to share their flyers. So they have a pop-up ornament. So handmade ornaments by our LP Wilson students. And the Spark and CBTA programs are be on sale tomorrow, Wednesday, December 18th, from 12:30 PM through 1:30 PM. Again, at 12:30 PM through 1:30 PM. So I want to make sure that folks can come and support that. And bring your cash. Say it again?
Right here in the lobby.
Right here in lobby, bring your cash. And if you're going to be a little late, just call my office and we will get your money. And we will get you, um, we will get you one of those. Don't worry about that. Say, "I was gonna come." People will give excuses. I feel like it's a church drive, right? "I was gonna come? It was on my heart. I was praying about it." You don't need to pray. Just bring your money. We got you.
Can we take a quick picture?
Yes!
Sure. You don't want to put it in front?
No.
Show your ornaments.
With your ornaments. There you go.
Oh! So it's called No Limits Laser Engraving?
That's so cool.
I'm gonna show my ornament.
I know, right?
I'll show the work.
You're so right.
Show the ornament.
Yeah.
Here, right here.
Wait a minute, hold on. Let me get on the right side.
Frank and Shakira actually assembled our laser engraver just.
Yeah! Cheese.
No limit.
Yeah! Thank you so much!
Very beautiful.
This is cool. It's very cool.
Thank you.
Huh? I have a question, I'm sorry. Because I want to make sure the public knows. How much are these?
So all our ornaments tomorrow are $5. And then we have some paper wreaths the students also made that are $10.
Okay, so bring $20 tomorrow from 12:30 to 1:30 PM. Because you want a few ornaments. Thank you.
They're great. We have ceramic, we have laser engraved acrylic, we have laser engraved wood, and we have some beautiful hand painted shells that the students have been working on, so.
There you go. Thank you guys so much.
The next order of business is our audience to visitor. And Ms. Daly, can you read our script?
Good evening. This is Robin Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q&amp;A feature in the Zoom application. Or you may speak by clicking raise hand or dialing star nine within the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the board at this time.
Thank you. At the two-minute mark, for those who are in the boardroom, Ms. Taylor will raise a red card briefly just to let you know to start winding up your remarks. And at the three-minute mark, she'll hold it up and keep it up. And at that point, really try to finish your remarks. For those who are online, who may not see the card or on the phone, at the three-minute mark, Ms. Taylor will let you know that it's time to wrap up your remarks. So we'll take first those who are in the boardroom. But first, Mr. Lockhart, do you have a statement to read as well? Sorry.
Good evening. As Secretary of the Windsor Board of Education, I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operations of Windsor Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by law. Our mission is to develop the genius in every child and create lifelong learners. As the Windsor Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. Meetings of the Board are open to the public. It is a time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. The quorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phone or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, the Board Chair may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school system and thank you for your interest in the Windsor Public Schools.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the boardroom who'd like to address the Board? Please come up, state your name, print your name, and your address.
Just one point. I don't think your PA system in the room is working.
We can hardly hear you.
Yeah, it's very soft.
Yeah, these... If you were home, you'd be able to hear us better. So with that, we'll try to speak up. Anybody else, anybody in the room would like to address the Board? Please come up. I'm seeing a rush to come up. Is there anybody online who wants to address the Board? Any hand raised?
There are no hands raised for our attendees.
Last chance, anybody in the room? Seeing nobody's rushing to come up? You, Mr. Panos, please. Without objection, we'll close audience to visitors. Next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items that folks want to have pulled? Okay, looking for a motion then.
Thank you. I move the Board of Education approved Consent Agenda items 4A Financial Report, 4B Enrollment Report, 4C Food Service Report, and 4D Human Resources Report.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos for the Consent Agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, nay, abstention, motion carries, 9-0-0. Next item is the minutes. And let's take them one by one. Is there?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Move the Board of Education approve the minutes of November 19th, 2024, regular meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Lockhart.
I did receive a communication from a board member this afternoon questioning some motions being missing from the minutes. I have confirmed with Ms. Daly that the minutes that are on Board Book are consistent with the conversation that was had that evening. As we all know, these packets are printed in advance. And then from time to time, there may be some adjustments or additions made to the packets. So I am aware of the fact as well that under bylaws 9326, Section 8 for meetings, we are to just record high-level details of a motion made, who made the motion, who seconded it, and the tally of the vote. The only time that we really, really go into verbatim is when we do a roll call vote. And by Robert's rules of order, you're allowed to speak verbatim why you are for, against, or standing for a motion. So I just wanted to have the Board just know that it's all set in Board Book. But I also ask that you trust and verify. So I have confirmed with Ms. Daly, and we're all set.
As long as the...
Mr. Panos.
As long as the items that I brought up are included in there, we'll be able to see a final version.
There will be a final, Mr. President?
Mr. Lockhart?
There will be a final version that's already on Board Book. The spirit of what you stated in your email, sir, is consistent with on Board Book, which is all the motions that were made and who seconded it. There's no exhaustive discussion about the substance of the motion. Just the fact that the motion was made and seconded, and that there was a vote taken.
Sure.
So that's available to everyone now and is open for inspection to anybody that has their laptop open right now.
Any other discussion about 5A? Okay, let's go to a vote. Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos.
I'd like to take a look. He said it's available to laptop.
Mr. President, do you, are we able to put those minutes up on the screen by any chance? Is that, is that possible?
Ms. Daly, is that possible to put those?
Mr. President, I may. So the formatting on the paper version of the minutes is slightly different from the formatting that you see in Board Book just for ease of reading and continuity on paper. So what we're seeing here is the initial motion that passed. We're seeing the subsidiary or the subsidiary motion which failed, which has the motion in the body here. And then the second motion that did pass, which was the call to a vote. So again, continuity, it's different on the paper minutes, again, just for ease of reading.
Mr. Lockhart?
I think he had his hand off.
Oh, Mr. Halleck.
Um, thank you. When a, um, in the minutes, when a board member calls, calls the question, I would think that that would be a very significant point in the meeting. And that's something that should be recorded. You know, which board member called the question, who seconded it? You know, I just feel that that's something that is, is important and should be reflected.
But it's, it's right there.
I think they're saying that officially.
There were, there were three motions. One, the subsidiary that did not pass. One vote to bring it to a vote. And then the initial, the very first motion, which was the overarching motion to accept the entire program studies.
Okay.
So, Mr. President, I would ask that in the spirit of seeing like there's some confusion, it's correct, but we want to make sure everyone's comfortable with the fact that's correct. Can we just send a electronic copy of the minutes to every board member just to make sure that they all understand that this is what they voted on?
Ms. Daly, are you able to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. That was an oversight that that portion of the one motion was not included in the wording. Again, for formatting, there ends up being a lot of moving parts.
I think to my parliamentarian, I think Mr. Halleck was talking about whether or not the calling of the question should be in the, in the minutes.
If it's contested, yes.
I'm sorry, that's fine.
Okay.
My apologies, I missed that.
No, I just want to make sure.
Make sure, right.
I appreciate it. And I just want to make sure for the public, what's on the screen here is slightly different than our handouts that we received that we received. than our handouts that we received that were pre-printed in advance and there were some changes made. That happens from board meeting to board meeting where there's slight changes in presentations and stuff that are presented, but the substance of the documents are typically the same.
And to the public, sometimes we have to go back to the record that in the future and correct it at the next meeting. We are able to correct it here this day and I appreciate Mr. Panos and Mr. Lockhart and Ms. Daly's efforts to do that. All those in favor of the minutes of November nineteenth, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries nine zero zero. Next is another motion, Ms. Taylor. Oh, Mr. Lockhart, I guess, sorry.
Move the Board of, move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the December third, twenty twenty-four ad hoc cellphone policy committee meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Is there any discussion? Mr. Panos?
Yes, I just point out-
You can speak loudly.
Yes, I'm sorry. I just point out that I think we ought to research, during the discussion, it was said that the, there was a current policy and there's an administrative regulation and a policy referring to disciplinary policy five-one-one-four, which is a very long, several-page policy regarding student discipline and actions leading to disciplinary actions and that a part of it referred to cellphone and that therefore that consisted of a, that meant that we had already a cellphone policy. And I would just like to have that checked out with, let's say, Cave and Shipman and Goodwin to see if that's, if they consider that, because if you look at the examples sent to us by the state, for example, they gave us some, some examples of, you know, what a policy looks like and, you know, it usually begins with a kind of a philosophy at the beginning and then proceeds to say what, you know, gives a lot of detail. So here's, here's, for example, a couple, you know, if you take a look at this, here's Waterbury, it has, it begins with a statement, then it says definitions and goes on, let me, let me see if I can get it better. Here's Lime and Old Lime. Yeah, okay, here's. Oh, here, here's, here's a couple, here's a couple. If you can take these. Here, take a look. Lime and Old Lime, see, it begins with a student policy and a number, even point eight-one, begins, for example, student policy, use of electronic and telecommunications, telecommunication devices, it begins with, it's several paragraphs, it's a couple paragraphs, excuse me, and it says, you know, the use of telecommunications devices, including but not limited to, et cetera, et cetera, smartwatches, whatever, and then it talks about it and it says, students who disrupt the instructional process through the use of such devices may have these devices confiscated. And then it talks about extenuating services, you know, but anyways Hartford has its own. So anyway, my point is that, you know, I think that it should be noted that we really don't have a cellphone policy. I believe that it's accurate to say that we, and that the state sent us some, the state Board of Ed gave us some guidance on this. You can, you know, typically, they gave a couple of Connecticut examples here, you can take a look at it.
Can I raise a point order?
Yes.
Here.
Can you hold on a second?
Sure.
Seeing that we're discussing the minutes, I would ask that the valid points that Mr. Pen, the speaker is bringing up, if we can discuss this under committee reports where it's appropriate for us to discuss it under the agenda items, with the possible action maybe referred back to committee, I think that would be something more feasible than under the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Yeah, and, and I, I know Mr. Wallaston was going to be talking about in, in reports and that would be a better place than just approving the minutes.
And I just want to be clear, he's making valid points, I just think it's better discussed under committee reports of the minutes.
Sure.
Any other discussions about the minutes from the committee meeting? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries nine zero zero. Next item on the agenda is student representative report. Victor?
Right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As this is our final board meeting of the year, I'll do my best to keep it brief. So first, the STEM department. So last month, a representative from the CT Humane Society visited Windsor High School to talk to biology students about careers in animal care and welfare. The discussion included the broad career paths at CT Humane where staff frequently move between roles. They also outlined volunteer tasks such as caring for animals, raising funds, and fostering pets. It was an opportunity to encourage students passionate about animals to consider careers in the field. Additionally, a group of Windsor High School students attended the virtual actuarial and analytics high school day hosted by travelers last month. The event offered insights into the insurance and actuarial professions, featuring discussions on job shadowing opportunities and an interactive insurance game. It was designed to inspire students to explore careers in actuarial science and insurance. Second is the Windsor torchlight parade. So the WHS GROTC and marching band participated in the Windsor torchlight parade last December seventh, joining the community in a vibrant holiday celebration. The GROTC played an important role by directing traffic, ensuring the smooth flow of the parade, and maintaining safety for all attendees. Meanwhile, the marching band kept the energy high, the drums moving through the streets and fueling the crowd's excitement. These students' commitments to the making the parade enjoyable for everyone is commendable, especially given the chilly temperatures. Third is the athletics department. So winter sports season is officially here. Sports currently in the running that we should show our support for is boys and girls basketball, unified sports basketball, boys wrestling, boys ice hockey, boys and girls indoor track, and boys swimming. Our boys' basketball team, the defending state champions, if I may add, is currently playing their first game tonight at the main gym. Throughout the season, let's come out and cheer on athletes, cheer on our athletes. Fourth is the blood drive. So our second blood drive of the year was held last Friday, December thirteenth. We had ninety-three donors and set a new record, collecting twenty-four-five pints of blood. Donations came from both students and staff, with twenty-five student volunteers assisting throughout the event. The drive, sponsored by Warrior Productions and the CT Department, offered community service hours for those who donated. We appreciate the generous support of local businesses who provided both food and gift card donations. Some would be Windsor Pizza Palace and Dunkin' Donuts. The next blood drive will be on February twenty-fifth. A special thank you to Mr. Fury for his donation and to everyone else who participated in the blood drive. Fifth, the CCMC pajama day. So WHS showed its support for the fight against pediatric cancer by participating in the annual PJ Day for kids. On Friday, December thirteenth, students and staff wore pajamas to raise awareness and funds for CCMC. The event raised two thousand seventy dollars, directly supporting the children at the hospital. Sixth, the music department. So you know it's the holiday season when the award-winning trio of the Windsor High School Music Department hosts back-to-back concerts. So first up is the chorus. So the Windsor High School Chorale kicked off the concert series with the Gift of Music on December twelfth. The Chamber Choir and the Teens of Gospel Choir impressed with a mix of holiday classics and choral favorites. Their lively performances, vocal arrangements, and harmonies captivated the audience. A highlight of the night was the four outstanding solo performances by senior students, showcasing their musical growth throughout their time. The Chorale is also hosting the Battle of the Sections Can Drive, with all donated sections going to the Windsor Food Bank. Those who wish to donate can drop off their donations in the designated boxes located in the choir room. The collection will continue until tomorrow, December eighteenth. Last night, the Windsor High School Orchestra took the stage with electrifying elements, feats, and festivities. They opened the evening with an energetic performance featuring a selection of a flock of pieces. They also delighted the audience with their lively renditions of popular Christmas songs. The musicians played with such enthusiasm that the audience couldn't help but move their heads to the beat. And last, but definitely not least, the WHS Band will be having their concert this Thursday, December nineteenth, at seven PM in the high school auditorium. The band has been working hard upon an amazing show and it's sure to be a night of incredible music. Let's come together to show our support for Mr. Monroe and the talented musicians of the WHS Band. We hope to see you there. With another year coming to an end, I want to thank everyone who makes Windsor High School the special place that it is. We're very fortunate to have a supportive and hard-working community. Thank you again and I wish you all a peaceful and joyful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Can we get here, you guys? So I think it's unfair to us that drove here to be in person, because a lot of us like to be in person. So if you're all parents, could you just use your parents' voice so that we can hear you? Because I feel like I need to go get checked for hearing aid tomorrow.
He's a child.
Okay. Any questions for our student representative? Thank you very much for your very complete report and-
It's always our fault.
I'm always amazed at how the in-depth you go to the wonderful things that have been going on at the high school. And as I've said before, I know you're a student, so if you need to be leaving, you're welcome to stay, but also we know with your schedule, that's fine to be able to go. Next item is the president's report and I think Victor stole a lot of my thunder, but I start with, on Wednesday, the twentieth, I attended the Junior National Honor Society induction ceremony at Sage Park. We had over forty students inducted and I got to see some of the CAP students who, award-winning students from Sage Park that we had honored the day before. They were part of the group of forty. On Tuesday, December second, I was at the CAE New Board Member and Leadership Conference in Rocky Hill, along with CAE President Leonard Lockhart, who was all over the place, on panels, jumping back and forth between two different groups. And I always pick up something new and it's great to be able to, to talk to other board members from around the state, including, there was a seminar that day about cellphone policy, so, which is a topic that we'll be discussing a little bit later on committee reports with the chair of that, Mr. Wallaston, talking about our first ad hoc cellphone committee meeting. On Saturday and Sunday, December seventh and eighth, Windsor Robotics joined forces with Windsor EMS and Windsor, the Windsor Fire Department to collect donations on Bloomfield Avenue. Another great assist from Captain Leonard Lockhart from the Wilson Company, who brought his truck out in the middle to protect our, our students and Mr. Lockhart's been very good in partnering with robotics and the EMS, even though the Bloomfield Company is right across the street from where we are, but that's for another day and time. Later that evening, I did go to the carol sing and tree lighting and the torchlight parade. It was a cold evening and saw the band perform and then they did a little bit of an extra concert in the CVS parking lot, very brief, but it was good to be able to, to see them and congratulate them and Mr. Monroe for what he does with our, our students. I also attended the Windsor High School Choir Concert this past Thursday, another unbelievable performance, Dr. White, kudos to Dr. White as always, and I know I saw Mr. Lockhart and Ms. Taylor there, and I know there probably were other board members, but I kind of sat towards the back of the auditorium. It was a pretty packed auditorium, too. Mr. Victor mentioned about the blood drive at Windsor High School. It was great to see also some teachers from, I know I saw a couple of teachers from Sage Park there donating as well. Not sure if they, one of them was in their, I think, I think a sweatshirt, maybe, maybe it was a different day at Sage Park, wear your college sweatshirts or something. I also attended briefly the Cluster Expo at Sage Park. That's where students who are in different programs, after-school programs, get to show off what they've been working on and it's always fun to see what's going on with our Sage Park students as well, the creativity. It started in the auditorium with a large drill team group and then there were different activities throughout the building. I then hustled over to Central to see the championship football game and unfortunately it didn't have the outcome that we were all hoping for, but the game wasn't decided till the last seven seconds of the game with a field goal. Let's see. Yesterday, another busy night, I saw Dr. Hill I know and Ms. Taylor at the girls' basketball game avenging a loss at last year's championship to Simsberry and good to see them in their first game come out victorious. I saw Mr. Panos as well at the orchestra concert, which was again outstanding, again a great job by our students and included, I think Victor mentioned it, but through, partially through a Windsor Education Foundation grant and some other monies, they were able to purchase a number of electric violins and electric cello. So the second part of the concert was people playing electric bass, you know, which is a regular guitar bass, but with electric violins and cellos. It was really outstanding. Today I attended Dr. Hill's coffee chat, which was, which was very lively. Looking at Ms. Gothy there. Any questions on my report? I did see Mr. Madison as well at Sage Park, the Cluster Expo. Next item, our school liaison reports and we'll start with Windsor High School, Ms. Taylor.
I'm just going to lift the things that you didn't mention and Victor didn't mention. Cap and gowns are, if you can believe it's crazy, available now for sale, so that's great. He did mention the winter sports that are going on currently, so it's a lot going on at the same time. So the girls play again, basketball play again on Thursday, also with the band going on at the same time, almost like the, you know, yesterday with the, you know, the strings and the basketball game at the same time. But I think it's an opportunity for people to try to do both and people did, so that's great. A lot of decision-making happening. If you want to follow on Instagram, WHSCO dot twenty-five decisions, these students are getting their commitments in rather early and it's exciting to see where folks are headed off to next year after they graduate from Windsor High School. And that is it.
Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate, sorry, our young men on a battle well fought, although it didn't end the way they expected it to. Something that's just been on my mind in my personal life is just a conversation about goals, right? We may not always get to the goal we intend or what we strive toward we may not achieve, but it's about who we become in the process. So I would say that to the young men as well. You may not got, you may not have gotten the championship, but what skills have you learned through that process of hard work and practice and dedication and tireless effort that we can continue to apply through our lives? Oh, yeah.
Any questions for Windsor High School representatives? Okay, Sage Park?
Yeah, um, thank you. So not a whole ton to report, obviously it's getting towards the end of the year. There was a snack drive that was sponsored for, sponsored for the F R C. Um, and they are still collecting donations of healthy snacks for students. Um, some of the students will be attending the Hartford Symphony Orchestra on the twentieth, which is great. Um, and then I personally just will always lift the P T O. The next meeting for the Sage Park Middle P T O is January twenty-ninth. And as always, um, people getting involved with that is great. And I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add, Mr. Panos?
Mr. Panos?
Well, you know, you've already mentioned the, um, National Junior Honor Society induction, uh, last November twentieth, and the, uh, in the winter choral concert that you attended the, the other day, December eleventh, and then the December thirteenth, last Friday, Sage Park had their Cluster Exposition. Uh, tomorrow night, uh, they're gonna have their winter band concert, so that should be interesting, six o'clock. And this Friday, December twentieth, uh, there will be a, a building-wide S E L day, uh, with, with many fun activities, um, kind of like crafts and stuff like making slime and putting glitter on it and all this sort of thing. And, uh, and so they will, um, uh, be, you know, that, that should be a lot for them. They're, they're gonna show a movie called Inside Out concerning, uh, emotions. This is put on the, uh, Doc Mallory and, uh, the teachers of, that have committed for this sort of thing. And on, um, uh, December nineteenth, there's a daytime concerts, too. So those concerts will be done, kind of the combined, uh, choral and, and band. Uh, they will be done, you know, three times during the day. And so you'll have to look it up, the sixth grade, seventh and eighth, I think the first one is at eight-thirty, and then the next one is at ten-thirty, and the next one is at twelve-thirty. So that can, you can access that online. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Sage Park? Okay, Clover Street School?
I have much to tell. Some of you know last time that, uh, Mrs. Lee took me to task for not having a summary of what's going on in her school. Um, it's not fun being brought to the principal's office even at the age of fifty-five. So, you know, I'm gonna change my mindset. I do wonder why we have this review of all the things going on, um, because if you went there, you already know. And if you really care to go, you already have it on your calendar. But apparently the, the culture of the board is that we review what's going on. So if this is a celebration of the work, I will be glad to, to follow suit. So, uh, that will be my new paradigm for this session, uh, this, uh, section of our agenda. So the Kiwanis K. Kids collected, uh, winter clothing from eleven-one to eleven-twenty-five. They have hats and gloves going to the Windsor Social Services, as well as socks to the Community Renewal Team for gift baskets for homeless children and shelters. Um, the book fair was, uh, twelve-four to twelve-six. They raised forty-five hundred dollars. Half of that goes to the book company, but the rest goes to support Read Across America Week, uh, the Book Vending Machine, and then the Student Activity Fund. They adopted Minnie the Cow. Uh, she's now over two hundred pounds, and that's to help the kids understand the, the impact and value of local farming. And then Pyjama Day, of course, that folks know about, they're participating in that as well. Coming up on Thursday, December nineteenth, at two o'clock, uh, we have the, uh, winter sing-along, which includes a special staff performance. And then January seventeenth, uh, there will be a family dance with six-thirty, eight-thirty, it's five dollars per family at the door, and the money goes to support the new sign, uh, on Gray Street. Thank you.
Any questions for Clover? Mr. Lockhart?
Yeah, I have to admit that I've been dabbling. I'm so sorry. I have to admit that I've been dabbling at Colt Clover. Um, as you know, Clover was my former school. And, um, also, point of personal privilege to my, my grandson, my marriage is also in that school. So, and a lot of the kids that went over from Paquonic, as well as, um, O E, are in that school as well. So like once a week, I go in there with my brown bag, and I'm having lunch with the kids. And just, it's just a good time, especially being there with my grandson and just seeing all the kids that I've, I've seen over the past two years just develop and really, really growing in their new environment. So, um, Ms. Lee has created a wonderful environment in that building, which you, you can attest to, Mr. Madison. And, um, I believe she has, um, tea with Mrs. Lee as well, where she's very, very engaging with the, um, the parents and the community. Um, so, um, kudos to her and everything her and her staff are doing in that building.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Next, we have John F. Kennedy School, Ms. Cantor.
Thank you. Um, picture retake day was on December second, and they had the P T O meeting that night as well. They had the elementary conferences on Wednesday, uh, December fourth and Friday, December sixth. And the Thursday was moved to the following week because it was a snow day. Um, so they had that, and they had the Scholastic Book Fair. And then they had project graduation dress down on December sixteenth. They have their winter break from twelve-twenty-three through, uh, January first, and on one-thirteen, they have their P T O meeting.
Thank you. Any questions regarding John F. Kennedy School? Oliver Ellsworth, Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, sir. So, um, on the twentieth, I believe that is a Friday, they're gonna be do, doing two sing-alongs. The first one is at nine A M. with the pre-K A M. as well as the kindergartens. And then there's one at two o'clock, which is the, um, pre-K P M. cohort and the first and second graders. Each, um, event is a half an hour. Get there early, because parking can be at a premium rather quickly wi, within that particular structure. They also have an upcoming P T O meeting on January sixteenth. Uh, but the important piece that I'll continue to pound on is the H V A C project that's been going on in there. Um, the good thing is, is that I believe we're, we're well-rounded third base and heading into home. Um, again, we gotta thank the Public Building Commission, as well as, um, Carlos, who is our representative, um, that's been dealing with this on, um, every Tuesday. Um, they're going in on Monday, the twenty-third. Um, there's nobody in the building, so there's no school. So it's given them an opportunity to really, really put to bed a lot of the punch item lists that are going on within that building. Um, the balancing is quite well. It's very comfortable in that building. Um, some people say it gets too cool or too hot, um, so the balancing is taking place. But the, um, the humidity is not an issue in that, within that building, and everybody is quite, quite comfortable in the building. So for it to be an aged building and to really go through the effort to put a custom-fit solution on that building, it's working quite, quite well. So I, I believe that we should continue to, um, thank Ms. Batchelder through her leadership with, um, the team to make sure that every step of the way, um, we've been providing the support in that building and to make sure that when you walk in that building, it's actually an educational environment conducive for everyone wanting to come in there and do their job. So just want to say thank you for all that's involved. And importantly, the laborers that have been dealing with this, they are far and few apart. There's not a lot of qualified, worth their weight in gold contractors out there that will give you a good day's work for the money that you're paying. And I, I will, I believe that we've really, really gotten our money's worth with these contractors, and they've really, really been put under extreme pressure like an olive to make sure that they deliver and deliver right the first time. So it may have taken a little bit longer, but at the end of the day, the solution is working quite well, so we should all celebrate that. And Dr. Hill, thank you so much for, um, working with us as a board. I know you took a lot of heat for that as the superintendent, um, but I'm, I'm glad as a board we came together and working in unison with you and the, and the town council to make this work.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Any questions regarding Oliver Ellsworth? Mr. Hallick, Paquonic School?
Uh, thank you. Um, on December, uh, second, I attended the, uh, P T O, a meeting at Paquonic. Um, I, uh, I was able to, um, to talk, to talk about, um, um, upcoming, uh, board of ed meetings, which included our budget, uh, meetings, uh, uh, that are coming up and encouraged parents to come to our meetings and speak and, and participate in those meetings. Um, the next, uh, P T O meeting will be on January of the sixth, from, from six to seven P M. in the library. Um, holiday break begins on, uh, Monday, December twenty-third. Um, there's gonna be a Paquonic, uh, a holiday, a concert on Friday, December, uh, twentieth at ten A M. The Paquonic, uh, P T O is also offering an exciting opportunity to see Disney on Ice on, um, early next year. That's gonna be on Saturday, um, January fourth, at seven, uh, P M. at the X L Center in Hartford. Tickets have to be purchased by this coming, uh, Monday, um, December twenty-third. Um, you can find all the information on the school, uh, website, and a portion of each, uh, ticket will come back, uh, to Paquonic School and benefit the school. This week is our school, uh, Spirit Week at Paquonic. Um, they've had a theme, uh, for each day. Um, some of those in, include, on Monday, they had, uh, a maroon and white day. Uh, Tuesday was a Disney Day. Tomorrow is Mad, a Plaid Day, and there's a few others on Thursday and Friday as well. And then finally, um, the December Assembly will be held on Friday, uh, January, uh, tenth at two-thirty P M. Thank you so much.
Did you dress up for anything for Spirit Week this time?
I did not, unfortunately.
Any questions for Paquonic, Mr. Hallick? Good. Next is superintendent's report. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm kind of feeling, Mr. Madison, I've said that for a few years now. You go through these reports, and you get to superintendent's report, and I'm like, okay, what I got left to say? What am I, I have never been flavor-flav, but whatever, we'll keep doing it. So I did hold, uh, this month's coffee talk this morning. Um, I thought it was, uh, a good coffee talk. We had a couple of new people there. And, um, I'm happy to report that one of the issues brought up by a parent, it was dealt with, uh, successfully, I'll say. The parent informed me this afternoon that they were happy with the resolution, so it was, it was set. So that's one of the reasons why I believe we should have coffee talks, because you get a chance to talk to people face-to-face, and you can cut down on the chatter that happens online. Uh, we share with the public that I don't engage online. Um, I laugh, because all the groups online are always concerned citizens of something. I have yet to figure out in all these years what they're concerned about, other than fussing. But if you want to ever resolve anything, I've always learned and believed you resolve things talking to people face-to-face. So that's my public servant service announcement for coffee talks moving forward. The next one will be January twenty-eighth at five P M. in the L P W boardroom. And it will be strictly one hour, because that is my wife's birthday. So I will be walking out at six. All right? Um, because I can't have a coffee talk if she's not happy. So we also will have a community forum here at, uh, the high school on January fourteenth, Tuesday, January fourteenth, beginning at five-thirty P M. It'll be in the Windsor High School Auditorium. And we were asked by, um, the team of Senator McCory and Commissioner Charlene Russell Tucker. They will, it'll be their forum, and they asked to hold it here in Windsor. So it'll be at Windsor's auditorium again, Tuesday, January fourteenth, beginning at five-thirty P M. Um, we already talked about the concert. And finally, I'd just like to wish all families, uh, you know, safe and happy holiday season. I actually say Merry Christmas, and I'm not really concerned about offense, because I say Merry Christmas, because that's what I believe. And I say happy holidays for folks who don't say Merry Christmas. And I say enjoy the winter break for folks who don't do that either. So I, I don't silence people, but I hope you enjoy the time off coming up after this Friday. And I tell my staff to get rest, to disconnect, and be thankful and reflect on this year as we go into twenty-twenty-five, when we'll be returning back here on the second of January. Um, staff will be at a minimum and central office during that time, which means I won't be here, but there will be some folks here on Janu, I mean, excuse me, December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, offices will be closed, and again, on January first. So you can work around that, but there will be virtually no people, um, in our buildings or at our schools, because it's that time of year. So I don't want parents to think that it's a good time to call because they're on a break, because everyone here is gonna be on a break. That's it.
Any questions for Dr. Hill? Next item, Dr. Hill's budget assumptions, second reading.
Move the board's education except for second reading, the budget assumptions for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Is there a second?
I'm second at motion.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos, the budget assumptions, second reading.
So what I would like to highlight before we recognize, um, Dr. Hill by May?
Yes.
I did not receive any feedback from the board about any changes to the document with the first reading. So if there's something that you was, you tried to get to me, I'm acknowledging I have not seen it. So if they'll second get to me, this is the time to, to flesh it out. And the date, uh, for the actual reading is, um, prepared to be shared with the board as well, and to the president.
Okay, are there questions regarding the budget assumptions for Ms. Batchelder? Do you want to? Ms. Batchelder, do you want to make some comments before?
Yes, I do. Um, I just want to reiterate what I stated last month, um, because this will be coming up, uh, once we really get into the budget season. Um, and I, I just want to make sure everyone is fully aware and there's no question after the fact. Our insurance, um, claims have skyrocketed this school year. We have many people, um, that have reached the high claimants, and it is, um, something that I've never seen before. So when we go into budget and we're feeling it this school year, um, because of all of the high claims, we're gonna have a significant increase. When I say significant, I'm talking like in the twenty percent range for insurance. Thank you.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, to piggyback on that, Ms., I'm so sorry.
Mr. Lockhart and then Dr. Hill, if he has something.
I just wanted to highlight that what Ms. Batchelder is pointing out is a very, very pivotal point. The district has benefited over the past six, seven years, very, very flat claim rate, where it's been beneficial to our budget. It's now at a point where we're having an off year, and the, the, the claims are a lot higher than we anticipated and that we forecasted based off of previous performance. So, um, that twenty percent number is something that's gonna be, something that's gonna be high, and that's gonna make us really, really sharpen the pencil and take a look at other things and what needs to be done. So I want to thank Ms. Batchelder for pointing that out for us.
Dr. Hill?
Thank you. So what Mr. Lockhart said, and I just wanted to be clear, um, when she said that we had, you know, a number of people with high claims, it, it wasn't like, you know, fifty, sixty, hundreds of people like that, just a few people. And just a few people with high claims, and I believe in Ms. Batchelder, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe they reached a limit, is that not two hundred thousand dollars for that individual person?
So, right, so I actually received our projection this afternoon from Lockton, um, and that's only through October. And, but as the employer, I see claims, um, before Lockton doesn't does their, um, projections for us. So even, they're not even seeing the claims that I'm seeing already. And we actually have, um, we, at, in the beginning of this school year, it was only a few. Unfortunately, now there are, you know, over ten to fifteen people that have very, very high claims. Um, and that, that is pushing us over our stop-loss, which is what Dr. Hill was referring to, which is a mass of two hundred thousand.
Thank you, Ms. Batchelder. I just wanted, so people understand what that meant, when she said that claims are high. Um, I'm sure our nurse understands that, you know, and it's not across our whole district. It's, it just takes a few people, and the insurance really moves.
Mr. Panos?
Uh, from the twenty percent, you're looking at over two million dollars? There's an increase.
Possibly, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lockhart?
Is this something that can be, is, is, has there been any discussion with the town manager and/or the town council about these developments and how it has gonna have such an impact on our budget?
Uh, not, not from my side. I don't know if there's been any, I can ask that question to Dr. Hill. And Ms. Batchelder?
Yeah, so, um, when we saw the claims come through in July and August, um, I immediately reached out, um, to the town, um, because I actually thought it was a mistake. I, I really believe, like, that anthem was, like, that they were looking at a different district and charging us because it was so not the norm. Um, and so I did get the town involved, um, and I've been talking with them. And I recently just, um, gave them a projection. And I recently just gave them a projection on where we are for this year. And then we're talking, you know, numbers for next year, but they will be significant. And again, it was, it was something that you can't project if someone is going to have a serious medical condition. So it's not something that anyone knew, you know, last March even. Unfortunately, you know, our staff, we have a couple very high claimants. I'm not going to get into it any further in the public session, but they are definitely our claim, and we are the employer, and we're responsible for covering that cost for our employees.
Thank you. I guess we have a lot of work to do here. Mr. Panos?
So there's, you know, under the assumption, we do mention, you know, about staffing and things of that nature, but there was no mention about the upcoming change in the contract. So there was no way we could make allowance for that. We don't know yet whether it's going to be high or low. That's the only thing that they say that we haven't captured here, so that may also be significant.
You're talking about the WEA?
The WEA contract will be...
Can't be in the budget assumptions, because we don't have a contract yet.
Yeah, so not much to say there.
If there's a third reading, I guess that...
No.
That would be additional news.
That's the budget consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Bachelder, thank you. Not thank you for the bad news, but thank you for explaining where we are.
Be tickled. So we vote in?
So...
Yeah, I think we...
Right, I think the motion was made and seconded on the second reading of the budget assumption, so we'll take that vote now. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries 9-0-0. Committee reports, we'll start with Mr. Wallaston and the Ad Hoc Cell Phone Committee.
Good evening, everybody. Overall, I do believe we had a successful meeting. There were important points raised by Mr. Panos, which I will get to. But I wanted to start with just reading a few of the points made by the governor and the State Department of Ed regarding the personal technology use in schools. So one of the first things mentioned that they suggested in elementary school is, they say the policy for elementary school students should focus on removing cell phones from the classroom to maximize academic, social, and emotional development. It goes on to say, specific procedures for collecting and isolating phones upon arrival at school or in the classroom may be necessary to ensure compliance with the policy. And this is just kind of their suggestion in the framework that the governor and the Department of Ed came together with, just to try to help districts shape in the right direction. For middle school, they said the policy for middle school students should also focus on removing cell phones from the school day or classroom. And they go on to say, developmentally, this age group is particularly vulnerable to the negative effects of excessive personal technology and has a difficult time controlling their impulses. Concurrently, middle school students experience increased autonomy and independence during the school day, which can lead to increased opportunity for cellphone misuse. They say possession of the school, of, sorry, of cell phones in this age group is likely to be viewed as a rite of passage into adulthood. So communication and application of policies that restrict use must be developed in consideration of specific challenges of middle school students. And then for high school, it's, it's pretty simple. It explained that the policy for high school students regarding the school day access and use should still be restrictive, however appropriate. High school students may be developmentally ready to take more ownership of controlling excessive use and ownership and understanding responsibility and ready to take more ownership controlling excess, oh, sorry, I read that twice. Sorry, regarding technology use to better prepare them for life after high school. And it goes on to say cellphone use that are turned off and kept out of sight create classroom environments where students are less likely to be distracted by interruptions. So I read that just to share that we're not too far off as a district from what we have in policy, from what the state has suggested from the governor's office and the State Department of Ed. Believe it or not, in 2021, in this, in the December meeting, we spoke about the same exact thing. We discussed, bless you, we discussed P114, Roman numeral 3, down to number 28 and 29. If we can pull the onboard book, that would be great, but I'll, I'll read it here. It's P114, Roman numeral 3. Sorry, you're right. Policy, P5114, wrote it down wrong. Roman numeral 3, numbers 28 and numbers 29. And so this is under this section that says, actions leading to disciplinary action, including removal from class, suspension, or expulsion, or slash and expulsion. So under 28 and 29, and there's over 30 lists of things that could get you removed from class. And number 28 is possession and/or use of a beeper or paging device on school grounds, on school transportation, or at school-sponsored activity without the written permission of the principal or designee. And then, sorry, 27 is the one I meant to mention, 27 and 28. Possession and/or use of a school, sorry, of a cellular telephone, radio, portable audio player, CD player, BlackBerry, personal data assistance, walkie-talkie, smartphone, mobile or handheld device, or similar electronic device on school grounds, on school transportation, or at school-sponsored activity in violation of board policy and/or administrative regulations regarding the use of such devices. And that's when we would go into the AR that each school has, which for Sage Park, as Mr. Jorgensen kindly explained for us, is a way for the day. Very similar to what the governor saw right for the middle school aged children. They're not really at the place where they can control the impulses to have a cellphone out and then put it right back away and be responsible about that. So the teachers in our Sage Park, the teachers in our elementary school, they don't want to see the cell phones at all. As was mentioned as well, in the governor's suggestion for what high schools should do, I believe his approach was a little bit different as he brought examples of Torrington and Milford. So Torrington uses a system similar to the pouches that some districts have, where you lock them away. But then Milford has a policy, and that's something he also exemplified in this little write-up that they released. And theirs is, is pretty much what we have, like an honesty kind of policy. You, you're not supposed to use it during the times you're not supposed to use it. And if you do use it, then that's confiscated, it will be confiscated. The way our board policy works, the way the legislation is written, is in a way that the power goes back to the schools, and the, the legislation is there as well in the AR. So just because, so it's referring to the legislation that's already there. So I can't say just because we don't have a write-up of first offense, second offense, third offense in our board policy, it's not actually there, because it is in fact there. It says you can be either expelled, you can be suspended, you can get any form of disciplinary action for the, an offense against, whether it's possession of a cellphone or whatever, in accordance to the AR. It even goes further into P5, sorry, P15?
5114.
Yeah, that's the first one. There's another one, P5144. That further explains the kind of disciplinary action that can be taken in general. So here, we have the disciplinary measures that teachers can take. And this is just further explanation of what can be done in accordance to the board policy. So the disciplinary measures that teachers can take are counseling, contracts in parentheses, behavior limits slash consequences, detention, assignments of work to make up deficiencies, special seating, parental conferences, exclusion from class in accordance with the procedure outlined in P5114.1, Section 3, 8, refer to the principal. So once you get to the principal, if that's what the teacher chooses to do, but of course, it would be in accordance to the administrative, administrative regulations that we have. You have things that we can employ, like, again, counseling, contracts, makeup assignments, detention, exclusion from activities in classes, reassignment of classes, parental conferences, in-school suspension, suspension, recommendation for expulsion. So the way the legislation is written is in a way that overly encompasses, overly encompasses everything. So although we don't have a Waterbury way where it says 1, 2, 3, all bases are covered through the way that our policy is written, in a way that also provides autonomy to the schools. I think it is pretty well-written legislation. And the students know what the requirements are. They know if they get caught with their phone by a teacher, it's going to end up in the main office, and the first time they'll get it back themselves. But the second time, their parent is going to have to get involved. So I, I do believe our students understand the expectation. I think we're running shop well, as it refers to this topic. And I don't think we need pouches. So, I mean, worst-case scenario, we don't really have to get there. I do understand where Mr. Panos is coming from, as far as having it written out like this. But this is mainly more of what we would find in the AR, as far as our district is concerned. But the way our policy is written, I believe all our bases are covered.
Yeah, and for the public as well, even though this is our business meeting, this is a work in progress. And if there were major changes, my own suggestion would be that they don't come in the middle of the school year, that we get input from the various folks, be it teachers, parents, students, the public, to say where, should we do a wholesale change, or... Because this is something that we've already, the State Board of Education has kind of punted this back to us to do something. There were some talk that we had heard, I think Leonard through Cave, that they may end up having a certain mandate, and that they eventually, whether it was the State Board or the State Department of Education or combined, kind of punted on that. Mr. Wallaston?
I'll just add, you know, because I have, I have nothing to lose in this sense. The way the recommendation was written, in my opinion, is kind of does suggest, in my opinion, not blatantly at pouches, but I know that the cellphone pouches are something that has been a newer business venture. I'm not sure who is making money off the cellphone pouches. But it does sound like there is a little bit of a push toward cellphone pouches in there. It's not very blatant, like, hey, everybody get cellphone pouches. But there's a little nudge there, and I don't know if I'm, I'm really supportive of that. But I like that it was written the way it was, because it does give an option of like Milford, who is applying a policy and is not using any pouches at all. We don't, I don't think have to waste money on that in our district.
Ms. Taylor, and then Mr. Panos?
Yeah, I just wanted to lift the fact that, you know, I mentioned and, you know, when we met in the committee about our, covering our bases, doing due diligence, not only having Dr. Parker from Windsor High School, but Ms. Jorgensen from the middle school to, to bring us the data that we needed to, to make the decisions that we did. And I'm a data person, and, you know, sitting with the Windsor High School Governance Council, speaking to not only students in that meeting, but teachers and parents in that meeting. And I just want to thank Dr. Parker again for giving me some time to do that. They all agree that it's working how it's happening right now, to Mr. Wallaston's point. And I think that we need to let it play out, to your point, Mr. President. You know, it also says in our approved minutes, approved minutes now, at this point in the meeting. But it was decided that the committee would reconvene prior to the end of the school year to review additional documentation. So it's difficult to, to really gauge how things are working just a few months, and we kind of need to see it play out with this level of increased intentionality at the high school level. Middle school, it's been this way forever. But I think at the high school level this year, they've been just a little more intentional and across all of the teachers with fidelity. Not, you know, just some teacher saying, yeah, put it away, and other teachers saying something different. And I think that we just need to kind of see a little more data before we go in any other opposite direction of what we already have in place.
Thank you. Mr. Panos?
It is true, I, I think that with the current staff we have, that, you know, we have significant controls. However, if you have a change in staff, principals or whatever, these, these decisions may be reversed, as has happened. As when we went and Mr. Osunday came in and did away with what, exactly that policy. So it, you know, it doesn't work that way unless you have a policy in line. So once the staff changes, it's not going to, it's not going to be the same. So it's not quite the same. Now, so, and the state is expecting us to come up with a, a policy. Now, you can't call it a policy on cellphone, because it's mentioned in, on a student discipline thing. This is, you might as well say we have a address code policy, because if it says if you're in violation of, you know, dress code, you will, you can be disciplined. So that's part of 5114. There's hundreds of other things. You can't say that we have a policy on all these things. Already, we already, we had to make a special one. So, you know, and they give you examples of this, I'm not going to go over this again. I just think that, you know, that things appear to be, you know, there's no hurry right now, because I don't think, you know, based on the data, that, that, you know, we, we have that many problems, unless we hear otherwise. I do think Ms. Jorgensen's idea of nothing in sight at all works very well. That's a, you know, it's a short, very short leash. But, you know, we'll look at data, and, but I do think that we will have to come up with something which resembles a, a policy.
Yeah.
Can I be clear? Just because I think sometimes you guys, because you guys don't do this, so you just hear from people. So when you say policy, again, I'm always saying to the public, and to my own staff, like, we can't confuse and conflate policies and ARs, right? The board makes the policy. Despite your assertions, Mr. Panos, that is the policy that we have. Now, you're talking about format. Like, in, in the course, the board can change the format of how you want to write it, but it is a policy. If you do this, here's what you can expect. It doesn't have to give you step by step by step, but it's letting you know, if someone were to ask me, "Dr. Hill, can my child be in their classroom on the cellphone?" No. How do you back that up? If a family wanted to take us to court, because we have a board policy that says these things here are going to result in this discipline. Now, it's written differently. I'm, I'm a little not surprised, but I'm just laughing to myself when you mentioned places like Waterbury and other things like, because I would not hold up any big city as an example, because I could guarantee you from experience of working in big city schools, please. So the state can say whatever they want. I think President Fury said it best. The state punted, and that's all they're ever going to do, is punt. And I think it's, what they really are saying is, because it's become a topic of conversation for the 50 governors in the country, that's really, that's what happened. I'm just, I'm always giving to the public plainly. They went to their governor's meeting, this was one of the topics they brought up. It has nothing to really do with the phone itself. It's about something that we touched on this morning in the coffee talk. It's the mental health issues that go along with the phone. As I've said many times, I'm all about, those are the things that we need to continue to work on. Right? Right? Because if you wanted to really stop the phone situation and keeping it honest with everyone, schools are not to fix it for society. Then you stop parents from purchasing phones for kids who are under eighteen years old. Like, it's very easy to stop things in our society. You can't drive a car until you get a permit at sixteen, but you can be fifteen with a permit in Georgia. So when people say these things, and I talk to the people at the state quite regularly, they, they are not gonna put themselves quote-unquote in harm's way. Because then they have to deal with the public, right? Because we're the ones, what's gonna happen? We're the ones who have to battle with parents when the phone is taken because they do get taken. And the parents are not happy about that because they feel like their argument, it's a valid one, but their argument is about school safety. So there's never gonna be a policy, there's no model, anything. All they did was take a couple samples and then they pushed them out to folks, right? Because I keep asking those superintendents, none of them are making any changes to what they're doing. What's really happening because the governor has talked about it, the state folks are talking about it. Now people are enforcing more. My student advisory group has made that clear the last two months that we've met because I brought this issue up to them. I say, hey, guys, this may be coming about. The board has the power and they may make some changes to our current policy. So you guys need to understand how this can impact you and what's going on in the school. Very much like what Ms. Jorgensen said and Dr. Parker said. This year, my high school students made it real clear. She, they said the only difference is this year, now the teachers are all enforcing it. This is, that's the only difference. Is that we knew, like, the students knew the rules, Mr. Panos. They weren't unclear. They just like, they just were getting away with because if teacher A and B are not gonna say anything, and all I gotta do is worry about teacher C and D and, you know, that's what it is. But I think the staff, as Ms. Jorgensen has said, and as Dr. Parker has said, they are now being a, you know, more cohesive in their effort. That's where the difference comes in. It's not changes in staff. It's if we're all working together following the policy that the board has laid out. It's not where it's laid out because I, I looked at some while you were talking earlier. They have their cellphone policy, some of them in the technology use section, right? Because there's no real phone thing you can create. Only you can say is, can I have the phone here or not? And if I do have it, what's the result of me having the phone? Some kind of disciplinary action. Ours happens to be in five, one, one, four. Some districts I've seen they have it in five, one, three, one, which is gonna be the technology section. It, it, it doesn't matter where you put it. The point is, can you have the phone? If you have the phone, what's the result of you having the phone? Discipline.
Mr. Madison?
Yeah, a couple things. I don't care what the state thinks, so uh that doesn't even influence my opinion. I guess my question is, what, what should we do? And so a couple things, right? When I read the policy and I read the AR, it's interesting because the policy says for some category of behavior, you can do something, and the something is the AR, okay? But it's very open-ended, right? And so it says, hey, for cellphones, you can do stuff. What can you do? Suspension, detention, et cetera. But it doesn't prescribe. It empowers, right? It's almost like deputization. And so it says, the board has said that through this policy, yes, the superintendent on down can make rules around this topic, cellphones in this case, and those rules can include detention and suspension, et cetera. It's very open-ended, right? So hold that thought because this reminds me of the old rule, you know, good teams don't need prescriptive instruction and bad teams don't get better with prescriptive instruction. Right? So when you're in a leadership position, prescriptive instruction is, is a questionable thing because good people don't need it and, and mediocre people don't succeed either way. And so it strikes me that this is a very open-ended policy, but a lot of things fit this framework, which is a policy says for topic X, yes, something can be done. The AR says the thing to be done is a, a mortgage board of suspension, detention, whatever the case is. So none of that prescribes. Now, the question in my mind simply is, do we, do we feel comfortable with that? Because under that umbrella of empowerment, it's like if I do this as an engineer, right? I can say to my offshore team, you are empowered to, to change the logging of these systems so that they do whatever it takes to be effective, right? Because systems, when they run, they tell you all sorts of stuff in the background, just picking a topic, right? I don't prescribe. I say, yes, you figure out the logging architecture. Better work in production. Cool. And they come back with something miraculous? Yeah. And if it come back with some terrible, ouch, right? Am I gonna pick up and do their jobs? I doubt it. So it's, it's, it's a standard leadership pattern. You say you are empowered to do X, go. Um, now the question I have is like, do we want to get more prescriptive? And so this comes down to like, let's say my offshore team does something stupid. I'm like, okay, I've written this ten times in my career. I'm gonna give them, here, write it that way, right? So do we as a board think we should get more prescriptive? Because I agree, it's something like what Paul said, it's very open-ended. A lot of things can fit this pattern of if it's this topic, you can do whatever you need to do enforce it. Um, that's going in my mind. I don't have an answer. I'm gonna stop there because it's just, it, it, I, it's like, you know, it doesn't say that, that the middle school needs to say away for the day. It doesn't say that there needs to be a three-strikes rule or however it's implemented in high school. It doesn't say those things, but do we want to get that prescriptive in our policy? And again, I don't care what the state thinks. Um, and the challenge you have, of course, is, is again, if you're a team leader, right, and you have good team and you say go forth and conquer, and they do, you don't need to prescribe. If you have a team that fails when you say go forth and conquer, wow, now you start prescribing. Are we really in a position to prescribe is my question? Don't have an answer, but just that, that's the framework that's going through my head.
Anyone else? First, Mr. Panos.
No, I'll just uh reiterate because I haven't heard any objection to what I'm saying. I said uh the fact that something is mentioned in, in the disciplinary, the student discipline section does not constitute a policy. Policy is very clear what they are. The, the policy manual is full of them. And uh, and it can, and so there's no point in, you know, beating the, there's, it's not a policy. It says, as says Mr. Madison is, is pointing out, is a question that, you know, you can have a policy which says that uh they are simply forbidden. That would be a policy and it would actually operate as an AR. And I'll, I'll point out that, as I said before, that you could with a change of staff, you could have a change of staff, all of a sudden, all the, it's, it's, it's not, it's not applied. Where they simply change the AR. ARs can be changed tomorrow. You know, can make it, say, well, we're not restricting them because we think, you know, new philosophy or whatever it is, we want to do it.
We're conflating. That's, that's, that's the problem. Keep getting the same thing. You're conflating two things. Policy is yours. You set the policy. AR is the superintendent's.
We don't have a policy on cellphone. We do not have a cellphone policy. I, I, I looked it up.
I beg to differ and I'll, I'll leave it at that because if we went to court over, we, why are we taking kids' phones? We've been taking them. I came here in two thousand and two. We've been taking cellphones from kids since I came here in two thousand and two. And why did the board not get sued in all those years? Why do we not get sued now? Because we have a policy and the policy is what protects you. When parents call us, because you don't get to hear those calls, sir, the administrators get to hear it. Why are you taking my child's phone when they start yelling at us? It's because the board policy says they're not supposed to have their phone and we, we show the parents. They may not like it, Mr. Panos, but that is the policy. Again, I, I don't disagree in terms of you don't like the way it's written and we may, like you said, the board may vote to say, let's write it that way. That's fine. But I'm saying we do have a policy. You can't say we don't. Because we keep saying the same thing. It's just circular. This is circular.
And then Mr. Panos. I think we're, to some degree, we're getting into semantics here, but we will, as a board, have a right to say we don't want as much discretion as possibly exists in the current, whether you want to call it policy with a small P or a big P, and we can set something that's much more prescriptive. And even though there could be different people, we can then go to, to Mr. Dr. Hill or whoever's superintendent at that time down the road and say, you have, you, we're the, you're the person we supervise. From what we're hearing, this isn't being enforced.
Right. I, I, I think we're saying the same thing here. I, I don't deny that, that, that you what we have here in P one, one, four gives authority to the district to expel or suspend as they uh for violating an AR. Now, the AR, you have the authority, of course, to run a school uh the way you want as a principal. However, if the principal decides, no, we're not gonna have that, then what do you do then?
I agree with you. The principal can't go against the policy. The AR, the example I gave, remember in the subcommittee, please hear me, please hear me before you say no. Because if you're saying no, you're not listening. So the, our transportation, federal transportation board says every state has to have speed limits in certain places. Some are the same and then some are different. I live in the south, you go out west, they have different speed limits, right? Everyone doesn't do fifty-five on their interstates. There are different speed limits. They have a speed limit because federal transportation board said there has to be a speed limit. Law, policy, that's the analogy. The AR is the state, its own state choosing what the speed limit is. So the principle, as you say, I agree. And come in and say, maybe I let the kid, I don't know, have the phone taken two, three times before I call the parent. That's, that's just, that's the discretion because again, we don't have zero tolerance. I mean, uh, yeah, zero tolerance policies, which is what I shared with parents this morning. That's the discretion that is given within the school. But the policy says that the phone is wrong, so the parent, that takes away the argument from the student and the parent.
What policy says that you have to, that, that you can take the phone away? What policy says that?
Policy five, one, one, four.
It refers.
Roman numeral three, number twenty-seven.
Okay, that refers, that simply says that if, if, that you can be disciplined. It's a discipline policy. It's, it's simply enumerates something that it's simply, and this is a, five, one, one, four is in every district. You know, it's not unique to us. It's, it, it comes, it's a standard thing. Every time you do an expulsion hearing, they give this to you. You know, and it simply says, this is one of the items, if you have a, in which, it talks about a policy, but it, unless you have a policy, it, it only refers then to the AR, any applicable AR. So if somewhere we say principals have the authority to govern their school the way they want and the handbook says you can't have a cellphone, then it applies and that's why you can expel a student. But we don't have a specific policy with associated ARs on that. It's, this is, is just, it's, it's self-referential, referring to something which we don't have. And if, if five, one, one, four is the policy, then this thing is simply referring to itself.
I would dare say, what's the difference then if a kid fights in school?
What is the question?
What's the difference if a kid fights in school? So we don't have a policy on fighting. We have a, we don't have a policy on fighting either.
We, we, we definitely, definitely have.
No, we don't have, it's five, one, one, four. So using your logic, if a kid fights, then we really don't have a policy. It's just five, one, one, four, we're just doing lots of things.
It does not say violates the policy of fighting. It says fighting.
That's what it says?
That it states fighting. It doesn't say violates the policy or the AR.
But how can we discipline a student for fighting, Mr. Panos?
Because it's say, it states the, it states the item. If, if it's, if it's, if you, if, if five, one, one, four stated, it said, if you have a, uh, if you have a cellphone, uh, you, 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 you use it, then you will be, uh, then you, you will be suspended or whatever. Okay? It doesn't say that. It refers to a policy.
But you went back.
Because if there are policies.
Fighting is the same thing. It's under the same one. I do all the expulsions. Fighting is under there. Bringing a weapon to school is under there. They're all threat. Anything that's disruptive to the educational process is under, and I need the public to understand that, under five, one, one, four. And then it just lists.
That's correct.
Areas infractions that would fall under five, one, one, four.
And if you said dress code violates the dress code, you'll say, it wouldn't be, it was the same thing. You would say, well, we already have a policy. Why do we have a dress code policy? We do. We have a separate policy on that. And so this, this is, if five, one, one, four is not, it, it refers to a policy. And so that's, that's the only thing that, that makes no sense here in the way it is. If it simply said, if you're caught with a cellphone, you will be, then, you know, like fighting. If you're caught fighting, you will be.
That's just simply telling you what the disciplinary action was.
But at, at, at some point, we have to decide as a board if we want to create something individual or do we want to leave it under the, the aegis of the disciplinary section. There's other things we can do. Mr. Madison, then Mr. King, then Mr. Wallaston.
Yeah, I'm just, all I'm thinking is that they were having discussions about how precise do you want to make the policy? Uh, because to me, five, one, one, four says, yeah, electronic devices are in scope and the AR that backs it up says that discipline can be uh had from, as a result of that. So that's a policy. It's just extremely broad. It's ridiculously broad. And so the question is, you want to get more prescriptive. So we could take away for the day and prescribe it. We could say middle school and below away for the day is, is now the policy, I believe, right? We could write that right into the rules. But that's, to me, we're arguing levels of precision, not whether we have a policy. There's a policy. It's just really, really broad right now. And so the debate is whether it's, it's useful to have a really broad policy or if it's better to have a more specific policy.
Yeah, yet, yet again, I hate agreeing with James Madison, but um it, we're, we're talking about semantics and precision of language here and that's fine, but, you know, when we think about policy, like, if you put a, if you put a crime and you say, hey, if you kill somebody, we're, you can get the death penalty. Just because we don't go and write specifically murdering, we'll get the death penalty. You know what's gonna happen, you know? But that being said, I, I think this whole discussion is great, but is that not point, is the point of this discussion to not happen in the committee? So should this not all be happening in the committee? Not right now during a committee report, just because I can appreciate the comments and I, I think they're good and valid, but I think those need to go to the committee chair and that needs to be put on the agenda for the next committee meeting versus us having this conversation and debate right now. That's my only question.
Mr. Wallaston?
Yeah, um, to Mr. King's point, um, I think the great thing about policy is that it's all about how you say it. Um, but just for context for the public and the people in the room, um, the part that speaks about cellphones and electronic devices, that's number twenty-seven and number twenty-eight under P five, one, one, four. Just to list a few things, because there's so many things that come before that. The first one on the list is number one, striking or assaulting a student. Uh, two, theft. Uh, four, violation of smoking, dress, or transportation regulations.
There you are.
Um, seven, refusal by a student to respond to a staff member's request for the student to provide the student's name. Um, eight, inappropriate displays of public affection. Um, ten, blackmailing, threatening, intimidating. Twelve, possession of any ammunition for any weapon described above in paragraph eleven. Ten, I mean, fifteen talks about possession, sale, distribution, use, or consumption of tobacco. So those are just some of the other things that are down in this same thing that um uh twenty-seven and twenty-eight is about cellphones. So it's really, yes, it's the disciplinary section, but it has so many other things that you also can't do in there. And if you do go against whatever regulation we have for these um specific sub-topics, it will be met with disciplinary action according to the administrative, administrative regulation.
I would suggest that we turn this over to Shipman and Goodwin. Just ask him a question. Look at our policies and tell us, is this a cellphone policy? Go to do the same thing with Mr. Goller down there at, at Cave. Just, just don't tell him, just don't tell him anything about this. Just say, do we have a cellphone policy? And, you know, that, this is a matter of semantics, but this is a question of, can, is of, you know, can you read? That's all, that's all this means. So can you functional, and do you have functional literacy or do, or are you just reading? So let's, you know, forget it.
Let's move, uh, I think we've beaten this to death. Uh, committee reports, uh, Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, um, finance committee meeting. I'm not sure if they've been sent out yet. That's football Sally. But the board meeting where the budget will be presented to us is January twenty-second. So therefore, the first available Tuesday after that will be Tuesday, January twenty-eighth. The next meeting will be on Wednesday, February fifth. I'll explain in a minute. The next meeting after that, the third meeting, will be Tuesday, February eleventh. And then the last meeting, if necessary, would be Thursday, February thirteenth, because that following week would be the board meeting. So we typically schedule four meetings, but we typically get our work done in three. But seeing that this is gonna be a difficult budget cycle, um, we may have to dip into that fourth meeting. Uh, I would ask that we be prepared for that. So the one that's on the fifth, I like to be in my seat when I schedule a meeting. Uh, I will be in the air flying home on Tuesday the fourth, so I could not guarantee that I would be here in time to chair the meeting. So uh, as the chair, I made the meeting be Wednesday, December, I mean, excuse me, February then. So, uh, as the chair, I made the meeting be Wednesday, December, I mean, excuse me, February then.
Any questions?
And then just for the public, it is, it is a committee of the whole, with the president being executive.
And I think most of those, there's an opportunity for the public to speak.
Yes, so the first three meetings, which is January twenty-eighth, February fifth, and February eleventh, there's public comment at the beginning of the meeting. The meeting, the fourth, if necessary, meeting on the thirteenth, there is no public comment.
Any other questions for Mr. Lockhart? Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, just for the greater good of the board, my baby girl is due February fourth, just so we know. So I will try my best to participate.
So the fourth should be fine, you're gonna be here the fifth.
Oh. Right, somebody gonna be dragging me out here dead.
Hey, I, I was kidding, Dana.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna block that part out.
Obviously- Please don't put that in the record.
Obviously, Mr. President, we do not expect, uh, Mr. Wallaston to be here. Um, his family is more important than a board of ed meeting, in my opinion. I might be alone in that mindset. But, um, anything that he wants to articulate to the, through the committee, um, I just ask that he put it in writing to myself, the president, and Sally, and C.C., Dr. Hill. Uh, that's, that's for the group.
Any other comments or questions? Any other committee reports? I assume not. Next item, other matters, regular board of ed meetings. Next board of ed meeting is Wednesday, January twenty-second at six-thirty. Superintendent will present the budget, and there'll be a public forum. And the next... I guess, I, I, I guess I'll go back and forth. Any, any announcements, Mr. King? Any announcements?
No, I, I just want to say, for the sake of the public, I agree with the sound issues in this room, and I think we need to take it up. Because it gets complained about almost every session. And, uh, I think we're here to listen to the people, and the people mention it frequently. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Wallaston?
Uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to all.
Ms. Cantor?
I agree, I've said this about the sound, people can't hear us even at home listening. And I know, I have a hard time sometimes hearing everybody speak here as well. So I think it's a problem, and it needs to be addressed. Um, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and I wish everybody also a happy, healthy, and wealthy new year.
Wealthy sounds good. Mr. Lockhart?
Happy Holidays to everybody. Um, look out for your fellow man, and please be safe in all that you do. And please be, be very, very careful with, um, anything you're doing as far as cooking, fire, anything of that nature. We want people to enjoy the season, but we also want our firefighters, um, to be able to enjoy it with their families as well.
Thank you. Mr. Halleck?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, uh, season's greetings to all. Um, and I look forward to seeing everybody and being back, back here in twenty-twenty-five.
Sounds good. Ms. Taylor?
I forgot to mention, um, about Project Graduation. If you're interested in, um, assisting our class of twenty-twenty-five, uh, please reach out to me, and I'll get you in touch with the folks that are putting that on. We definitely need this, the community's support. And Happy Holidays.
The other thing I was going to ask you about that is, um, what else can we do to encourage more folks to, to get involved? Even if you don't have, you're not connected to the high school, as far as fundraisers go, that we can, we put those in all the school newspapers? Because it's a lot of money that has to be raised privately for this celebration, which protects our kids instead of having them go out on the street and party with who knows what may happen. They're in a safe environment and can't get out until their parents come to get them.
Um, so many ways that you can get involved. If you, um, own a business in town, there's, um, things that you can give gratis, um, from raffle prizes and food donations. Um, but if you are just a, a regular person that lives in town and, and wants to do something, there's going to be a lot of fundraisers throughout. You might see the, uh, uh, your front yard might get flocked with flamingos. Um, what that actually is, is drawing attention to Project Graduation and, um, you know, asking for donations. But there's so many ways you can get involved. But, um, you can follow us, uh, Project Graduation, uh, twenty-twenty-five on Facebook. Um, and I'll, I could certainly get, uh, information out to all of our administrators to put in their newsletters to, to encourage people to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wallaston?
Could you explain how one would flock someone?
For those who don't know, it might be suspicious.
Um, flamingos flock, and on front yards throughout town, actually, a lot of towns do this. Uh, you'll wake up in the morning, and there's flamingos all over the place, and then it'll say you got flocked. And then in a pouch, uh, connected to one of the, the signs, it'll, uh, have a donation, um, form and a way to kind of tag the next person you want to flamingo, uh, and, and get flocked. Um, and so it's a, a way to, um, a fun way to tag, you're it, let's help the class of X, Y, Z. And this has been going on forever. I had, um, a Project Graduation back in, woo! Um, but it's been going on for a long time. So we're trying to get more people involved, so that year to, year over year, we don't have to start from, from status, uh, of zero, ground zero, uh, to collect the amount of money to, to put something like that on. And we do keep the students at Windsor High School all night long, so about three in the morning, to make sure that they can get through the night, uh, with a dry night. I don't know if you all remember, like, the prom promises and things like this. This is a way to, to, to keep, uh, our kiddos safe on nights where they can, might be influenced to do something different.
Thank you. Mr. Panos?
Uh, season's greetings, thank you.
Thank you. And, um, I want to again thank the music department at Windsor High School, uh, Dr. White, and, um, and Mr. Monroe in advance, and, um, with a, a great orchestra concert as well. Um, Mr. Pierce and his students did a phenomenal job. Um, also, thank you to, uh, Mr. Nolan, Gary Nolan, and Jeff Gooden for their support. Um, and that whole group worked so well together, um, to put on some great shows here. And luckily, most of them get recorded, so people can go and watch some, some, uh, very talented students. Thank you to the students who presented us with some gifts, and thank you to the district for our, our gifts as well. With that said, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, season's greetings, Happy Holidays, and looking for a motion.
We, we have one more item.
All right. You want to read one more time? Don't want to get out by nine.
Good evening, this is Robin Daly from the superintendent's office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking raise hand or dialing star nine within the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own, and no comments will be made by the board at this time.
Anybody online with a hand raised?
No one with their hands raised.
Anybody in the boardroom would like to address the board? Seeing and hearing none. It's okay, I'll close audience to visitor. Next item is their motion.
I move that the Board of Education, uh, move into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining between the Board of Education, the Windsor Education Association. We invite Superintendent Dr. Hill and Chief of Operations Danielle Bachelder and Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Noah Ethel Haiti into executive session.
Second the motion.
And I think what we're going to do here too, if this gets approved, we're going to hold it in this room here. So we'll have to clear the room after, after the vote is taken. Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries. Nine, zero, zero at eight-fifty. We are out of the regular session and into executive session. People want to take a five-minute break? Do you know?
Thank you.
Themselves a very high. Harsh, but. Okay. What? I was, I was doing the.
To our open session. I'm looking for a motion.
Moved at the Board of Education vote to ratify the agreement between the Windsor Board of Education and the Windsor Education Association covering July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. President, I also ask that this be a roll call vote.
Okay, is there any discussion? Miss Daly?
Bill Cantor.
Yes.
David Fury.
I'm abstaining as I have a conflict of interest.
Jeremy Hellick.
Oh, yes.
Anthony King.
Yes.
Leonard Lockhart.
Yes.
James Madison.
Yes.
Paul Panos.
Yes.
Ayana Taylor.
Yes.
Nathan Woolaston.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no, one abstention.
Thank you. Motion carries. Looking for one last motion.
I move to adjourn.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Second by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Abstention. Motion carries. Nine zero zero. We adjourned at nine thirty-two.
Happy holidays.